One of the here in person is that this fifty fifty raffle goes to support our picnic, which will be Saturday, July second. And as you all know, it takes a village to put on that picnic.
Can you hear?
Ask for you to sign up. We do have a few volunteers from the last meeting, but I have a sign up sheet here. Please take a moment, fill it out if you can help out to work on the picnic in any way, shape or form. Or if there's something else you'd like us to take note of, maybe you've changed your email address, or you haven't been getting our email, or whatever. Put it in writing on that piece of paper over there. We've only got one meeting left of this season, and we hope to do it here again in June like we do tonight. And before we go further, Peter, would you like to give a treasury report?
Yeah. Can people at home hear me? Raise your hand if you can hear me.
Probably should be closer to my computer.
What?
You should be closer to my computer. You couldn't hear me from here. Right here. Come here so that you're closer to the microphone.
Okay.
Yeah.
Uh, we have the same total as our last meeting, six hundred and thirty-one dollars. So we're well-funded for our picnic. There is a hundred and ninety-one dollars in cash and four hundred and forty dollars safely in my bank account.
What?
Thank you, Peter.
Okay, well, that's it.
Thank you.
Our guest this evening is Oakland County Commissioner Yolanda Smith Charles. Before I turn the floor over to her, in, in looking up online, I, I learned, I've always been fascinated about why the county exists, what does the county do? I, I'm kind of ignorant about all that. And when I did a little research, I saw that Oakland County has a budget of one billion with a B dollars, five thousand employees, fourteen hundred of which are just in the sheriff's department. The departments oversee airports, water systems, public health, medical examiner, courts, law enforcement, historic preservation, waste and recycling, parks, animal control, transit, roads, workforce development, property records, water resources, and I'm sure I didn't cover it all. It is a humongous, far-flung operation, and our guest is part of the team tasked with its oversight. Commissioner Smith Charles.
Sam. Take your hand officially. And I was gonna try to log on so they could at least see me, but I'm up here too fast. So we'll, we'll just cancel that part. And, um, you know, I love public participation. Let me see, where should I say? Looking at my back. Yeah, right there. Okay. So needless to say, and if you, okay.
Cause they're looking at you from here.
Okay.
That's not their way.
Nice to see them. And then I just wanna wiggle this so I could see Kenneth, Dawn, Lorraine, Leslie. So uh, just wanna acknowledge you guys being here as well, and of course, everyone here. One of my first supporters of all time in the, of the city of Oak Park was Conchera. So I Conchera, Conchera, would like to thank her for just leaving a meet a long time ago. Um, and another friend of mine from the campaign trail is here. So I'm sure Crystal Bailey is no stranger uh, to you all, but East O P and A is, is really a kind of a trail blazer, if you ask me, in terms of neighborhood associations. Um, having just recently worked very hard to get a real estate license last year, uh, I have a whole new appreciation for neighborhood associations, neighborhoods, you can even call block clubs, even understanding like the legal and organizational structure to some of them. And I know I've attended the Zoom a few times. I feel like we're missing someone whose face I see on that Zoom. Another guy. Is there another person who's usually on the, with long hair?
Oh, Jeffrey.
Jeffrey.
Okay, okay.
He couldn't make it to them.
Yeah, well, tell him he was missed, of course.
Okay.
Um, and you know, just happening to you all, what I realized is that very inclusive. It's not a clique-ish type of a thing or where, you know, officers really control it. Like you're really open, and I think that's pretty impressive, especially for a neighborhood association, because things can get off the, off the rails quickly if you're not, if you don't have, you know, uh, centric purpose, like you're all here for the same reason. So that's really exciting. And, um, I'm not, I'm not sure, but the lady in the back with the, the dark hair, did we walk together? Yes. Did we clean, did we walk around here and clean up?
Yeah.
You're kind of in kainito right now. You, you have the cats. And yes, okay. So just making sure I didn't miss anyone who was, uh, you know, kind to me over the years. So to your point, you took, you took a little of my steam, I will say, because I was just going to say that, you know, I wanted to quiz and poll and see what people knew about the county. So besides what Sam shared, what, you know, what things do you think about when you think about your county? And you could just shout it out, write it in the chat, unmute, whatever is appropriate, but what do you think about? Take, take twenty seconds. I'm teaching later tonight, so I'm getting in my teacher mode. Uh, while you're thinking about that question, you're like, it's awfully late to teach. Uh, it's actually a, a class at Long Beach, Long Beach College in Long Beach, California. So
You take my tax money.
Do, do I take your tax money?
You do. You take my tax money.
That is one thing the county does.
It takes my money annually.
You could say my annual, like twice a year. You, you pay a bill to the county. So that's a good one. Um, and if you don't pay, there's consequences, right? Like property forfeiture and things like that. Uh, I like to say that's the treasurer's side. You know, I don't actually take houses from people or property. Uh, but we definitely fund the treasurer and help to, uh, just make sure he or she, maybe in the future, has what they need to survive. So what else do you think about when you think about the county? Parks. Parks. Now, you're my, you're, so that's a good news one, and that's a maybe not so good news one. Uh, I'm actually on the parks board as well, so I we probably need a whole nother meeting for parks, uh, cause you guys have a park here. If some of you've been paying attention to the news, uh, that's in talks with the county. How many of you knew that? And, uh, so if you talk, the county parks is in talk with Oak Park, that's a mouthful, uh, to discuss, who knows which park?
Shepherd.
Shepherd Park, yeah. And it's highly, you know, highly coveted, beloved park. Uh, and, but, but we're at a little bit of an impasse, so they want to talk with some of your city leadership, see what's going on there. Uh, but definitely, uh, we are, we are at the table with parks. Water bills. Talk about that. Now.
Wait a minute, go back to park. What's going on? I don't know anything about them. Others, others.
Okay, no problem. So what I wanted to get your feel on was, did you want me to break each one down individually? Cause I didn't wanna miss anyone. So parks is, is a huge endeavor. Uh, you all recently just voted to approve a parks village. Uh, maybe you did, maybe you didn't, but whether you did or not, you're still being assessed it because majority rules in this country. And so needless to say, uh, the parks are about a fifty million dollar endeavor. So when you think about some of our smaller cities, who like Lake Village, for example, in my district, their budget is about five to ten million. Uh, so you can see the parks are pretty massive here in the county. We have thousands and thousands of acres to which we, the parks actually own, uh, Oakland, Oakland County Parks and Recreation. And so amongst the many things they have was in fifty-nine and north of there, if you were to Google like Oakland County Parks, you'd find a bunch of parks, beautiful parks. You've got uh, Groveland and, uh, Independence Oaks. They're all, the last word of all of our parks is Oaks. Yeah, those are our county parks. So we have, uh, Potampa Oaks and Southfield that was purchased by the county, you know, from the city of Southfield. And long years ago was actually where they put the dirt from six ninety-six. I didn't know that. So as you're walking around there, you'll know now. Um, but all of the parks are called Oaks in some way. So you have Red Oaks in Madison Heights, and you have Lion Oaks and South Lion, and I could name a few more.
Addison Oaks.
Addison Oaks, Glen Oaks, you know, so it has the Oaks in it.
What, what are the discussions about between Oak Park and the county?
Shepherd?
Yeah.
So, uh, Oak Park has a beautiful vision for what they wanna see happen at, at Shepherd Park. But you know, if you've been out to dinner and you've wanted a filet, but you only had like hamburger money, uh, you might accept help from someone to be like, hey, can you help me get this, uh, filet? And so that's kind of what Oak Park did. They said, wow, we have this beautiful space. Your commissioner, who, uh, remember Charlie Cavell, he and I shared Oak Park for my, for both of our first terms. Right down Coolidge, we shared it, split. Um, and so both of us were very keen on, like, where's the recreation for down here? And so the Oakland County Parks of Rec, uh, director, who has changed since I've gotten there, since Charlie has gotten there, listened to me, because I was really, I mean, I don't shoot my horn unless it's deserved. And I was like, you know, where's the Parks and Rec? Uh, there's some really, really cool parks in fifty-nine. And I'm like, what's, what's the deal below in fifty-nine? And so, uh, we looked around and then he contacted Oak Park, and they have had conversations with Eric Tungate?
Tungate.
Tungate, thank you. Uh, and you know, he's your city administrator. So he's got a lot, a lot of power.
Want to see how much tax money they can get from Oakland County to renovate that Shepherd Park.
And so the interesting thing is, you, many of you may have seen the renderings for exactly what they would like to do over there. Um, you may be even more familiar with what they wanna do, but the, the breakdown does seem to be, if I could be candid, am I, am I in a safe room here? Um, it does seem to be the train. And you, you guys know the train I'm referring to? Um, and so no, I know the train because I grew up in these parks, you know, that hill, the train, everything. It's so synonymous with, with growing up around here. So it's certainly not lost on me, but it is in disrepair. You know, if you don't do anything to your home, and it's out here in these elements for decades, you know, there could be truancy happening, people sleeping in the, in the train is, is what we've been told. And so, uh, needless to say, the, the county wants to invest a lot of money in the millions to make a portion of Shepherd Park into a wonderful recreation space. Uh, fully funded, we take really good care of our parks, you know, from the bathroom to the, the park ranger. Um, they're paid well, uh, the, the bathrooms are well-maintained, et cetera, et cetera. And so me being at the thirty thousand foot level, I try not to get into the day-to-day, but I can tell you guys, because you're the taxpayer, you know, you live here in the, in Oak Park, um, and perhaps you have a vision for Shepherd Park. I mean, they have a whole Facebook group, so it's not like, you know, there's, there are serious park bunch. And so we just wanna to find ways to invest in it. And so that's what's currently going on. It seems to have stalled. Um, I called some of your city, city, uh, council members who I know well, and, um, I have the utmost confidence that something's gonna happen, but will the, will the, will the county be a part of it? Because let me, let me paint a picture. Everyone knows Hazel Park, not Hazel Park, Pilot Park, right? Pilot Park is involved in another city, right? Similar with Hamptons. So that, that train, the proposal is that it would be its own hamptons. So surrounded by a whole nother municipality called the, the county, um, and still owned in Hamilton. I don't, I don't see the county signing off on that. Uh, if you all know Dave Coulter, you know, he's got, you, you know, he's a reasonable guy, but I don't see him saying yes to that. So we want that investment. We do. And I want to be a part of bringing more outdoor spaces down uh, south of Ten Mile, quite frankly. And, uh, so Shepherd Park is definitely in the conversation right now. You've got the floor almost.
So as I'm understanding what you're telling me, the proposal is to create a mini county park within Shepherd Park that the county would then subsidize and run. Is that the proposal?
I don't know if I'd even call it mini. It, it's a huge space in comparison to some of the, the spaces available right now. It's, it's quite difficult to find large expanses of land in this rural, or in this urban portion of the county.
Oh, all of Shepherd Park would be a county park? Is that the proposal?
Originally, and, um, the city decided they wanted to maintain some of it, cause they had ideas of their own. Um, I, I've heard slash pad, I mean, just different things, and all of this is public record.
It boils down to how much tax money in November that they're gonna put on the, the city's whole park.
So as far as I'm aware, it's tax neutral in terms of like any kind of special assessments. They definitely wouldn't be coming from the county. If there was a, a special assessment, I heard through the grapevine that your taxes are high, but I can't, I can't say that with confidence, because everyone thinks the taxes in Southland are high. Um, but based on the data point, I, I do want you to know that it won't, there won't be any, uh, special assessments coming from the county. And I haven't heard the city even refer to having a charter.
Subsidize what they get from all the grants and everything coming out and, and, and
So grants are good though.
Yeah, I know, but in November, we're gonna ask the body, uh, a tax increase for this.
Have you, have you heard that?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Cause I was wondering. Yeah, I don't either. And I just any additional ballot proposal.
Are you saying the county vision is to move the train and then go?
Well, of course not the hill, but, uh, the train could be a liability.
Wow.
Yeah. Like a
After sixty years, it's gonna be a liability now.
Right. I mean, if no, if no investments have been made to maintain it, it could very well be a liability, like collapse on someone. It's made out of, uh, wood, and if you ride over there right now, I'm sure you would see some things you would probably do to it to kind of help it in terms of sustainability. And we're not even sure moving it, if it would, if it would handle a move. It's really sad, um, that, you know, something so beloved, um, is just, you know, what to do, what to do. So really, the point of mentioning this is for, for your consideration. Um, all of our Oakland County Parks meetings are open to the public. They're the first Wednesday of every month. It is a bit of a hike to get there at, you know, at the Pontiac office, but we just started streaming, uh, the parks meetings where you can hear very well. You can see all of the commissioners. Uh, the next one will be that first Wednesday in June. And again, there could be movement happening before then, because the, the city probably has some meetings happening over the next couple of weeks. Also, there's things we're not privy to that, you know, city manager would be doing. I see Crystal and this nice lady here.
Thanks to that train, there'll be a lot of problems with the residents of Oak Park.
Yes, that's what we're hearing. Yeah, that's what we're hearing. And, uh, honestly, I feel the same way. I just, uh, you know, maybe there's a, um, foundation that could be started to help the train, you know, to re-integrate that train. I go fuck me.
Or a way to honor it in some way to keep it.
Right.
Part of the park, maybe it's not climbable or whatever, but it's still integrated.
Yeah.
Somehow, because it is such a icon.
Absolutely. I'm, I'm right there with you. So needless to say, your city council has said to me loud and clear, the people love the train. They want the train. They want the train. But, you know, just want to tell you a little bit about what's currently going on in terms of investments down this way. So, um, does that, does that kind of? And then, uh, water, you were talking about, which is usually, uh, the thing that I hear most people, if it's not the roads, it's the water that I hear a lot about. And the, so I've been on the board going on three years, so I'm not trying to, uh, suggest that.
Got these three, you've got, what, those four people that, that, uh, does the rate hike every year? And, and the county commissioners that we voted in there don't say nothing, because I working with Charlie Cabell, a, and, uh, he said the deal between Detroit and, uh, and Oakland County, it, it's no good, because, uh, they're gonna have to keep increasing the price of water years and years and years. He had a, a, a thing in Detroit News of, uh, of how much appropriations that, that every year it's gonna be going up.
Let, let's listen to her.
And, and hopefully you, you all were able to hear a little bit about that. And of course, I, I'm not gonna paraphrase what, what Charlie named. Um, I know Charlie is really, really serious about, you know, grassroots issues and things like that, so I would never uh, discount it, but I'm, I'm just aware of Gleewa and the Water Resource Commissioner working really closely together. And, um, some rate hikes have happened to certain communities where other communities, and I have a, I need to send that list to whoever's the secretary, because we have a list of cities that have opted out of some, um, hardship monies for people with their water bill, because right now, as you know, if you don't pay, at some point it goes on to your, uh, county, county tax roll. And it could prevent a person from being able to sell if they wanted to, things like that. And so uh, Water Resource Commissioner Jim Nash, who you all have probably seen over the many, many years, cause he used to be on the Board of Commissioners too, um, is, is doing all that he can to help with that, because again, uh, some cities in Oakland County don't feel like they have people in need who need those resources. And I can't say why Oak Park hasn't signed up, but they are not signed up. And so we are all board, all of the Board of Commissioners, all nineteen of us, as of yesterday, um, are, have been asked to make sure we go to those cities, townships or villages in our districts, to let them know that, hey, this month, this, there's resources there for each of these families, each of these households. It's very, um, I don't wanna say it's a loose criteria, but it, you know, if you're struggling to pay your water bill, it's a phone call worth having. And, but you cannot get access to it if your city doesn't sign up. I have, I may have an answer. What do you got?
As you know, the news, uh,
It's, it's it's still on. It's still working.
Yeah. Anyone else about certain specifics? And again, think about what you think the county is involved in. Yeah. Well, a lot of the cities that we've heard back from that have yet to sign into it thought that there was gonna be more paperwork and more bureaucracy for them to have to deal with. But from what the Water Resource Commissioners specifically told us yesterday, um, her name is Kelsey Cook. That's who's in charge of pretty much all things that deal with the public-facing part of, uh, our water supply. And they're, they're very serious about making sure cities, villages, townships know that it won't be more paperwork for them. In fact, if they're sitting there waiting for that money to come in, we wanna be able to pay that for them. So when the homeowner would actually not even have to be involved, they just have to let us know that it's happening. Um, and the Water Resource Commissioner has some money available for those families. There's two different types of availability. Some of them are federal, not just state, and, um, that, that would be a good thing for folks who might be looking for that. So we, I like what Sam did, even though you stole my thunder, talking about the various aspects of how the county impacts you in your day-to-day. So we talked about water, you know, water is synonymous with sewer. Uh, I had no idea just the infrastructure under these streets that we walk about on, um, and how much of it was built in like, you know, the turn of the century, which is fascinating and really cool, because it's still working. But you know, the fact that any minute now, God forbid, knock on something, uh, that, you know, things could crumble. And you've seen, I think, the big water main break at fourteen mile that affected three hundred thousand households uh, that the Water Resource Commissioner for Oakland County is responsible for. We, we also just had a report yesterday, uh, cause I'm Chair of Economic Development and Infrastructure as of January. And I said, you know, I wanna hear from some of these departments. They, they're doing all this good work. I wanna be able to champion them when I'm in front of voters and residents, citizens like yourselves. And we're just, we're, we're really blessed to live in this, this county that has resources. Um, from our health department, which keeps us safe in terms of, uh, you know, they actually test the, the water, the, the, the waste that comes from your toilets, in terms of the liquid waste. I'll try to keep it nice and, you know, above the board there. To find out about diseases that might be running rampant. I mean, there's just little bitty, uh, elements of your daily life that you may not realize the county participates in. So even, um, animal shelter, we just had the animal shelter director come and ask us for a couple million dollars for our animal shelter, because you know, Oakland County residents were up in, up in arms about seven years ago about the poor condition of our shelter. And, uh, so they did, they hired, you know, someone who's well-known in the field to go and analyze and audit the whole thing. And it turns out, we're, we're actually not terrible. I mean, nobody wants to, what do you give them a war for, for not being terrible? That's not what I'm saying. Uh, but I am saying that we're doing a good job already. And so the board unanimously said, yes, let's, let's make, make this a better place for these animals while they're, you know, looking for their next hunt.
Going back to water, I, I noticed that a Water Resource Commission has a purview over many communities.
Right.
Oak Park is not one of them.
Correct.
Oak Park runs its own water system. And I imagine other cities run their own, own water system. So how, what? Not standalone system. It's a part of a bigger system, but it runs its little subset. So how does that overlap work?
Yeah, so some communities will have, uh, have their sewer managed by the county. Some will have both sewer and water, like drinking water. So for example, Pleasant Ridge just recently hired the county, the Water Resource Commissioner Office to be in charge of their sewer and, and, and water system. Um, other communities feel like they have it under control, so they still, they still eventually lock in. Uh, you have the Gerald, Jor, sorry, Gerald Kuhn Drain, for example. It runs all and meanders all through southern Oakland County that, if not maintained, backs up. So the cities, villages, township, they all pay it to, to make sure that it's solvent. But yeah, most of the cities, many of the cities, I think it's twenty-one cities in, in particular outsource it to the county to manage. The rest of them do their own. Now, in the northern parts of the county, a lot of that is on well. You know, so they'll have like community wells, and they may not sign up with the Water Resource Commissioner as well.
And why wouldn't a city sign up with the county? Is it just about control and money?
Well, I try to make everything money-based, but I think it is about control. And if they've, if they haven't run into any problems, if they have the capacity to manage it, if they are able to hire and keep staff to make sure it's safe, then a community is more than happy to keep that under, under their hat. Um, but if they need help, maybe it's too big, too much going on. I think about Pleasant Ridge, they don't really have any business, community, uh, you know, money's coming in. So for them, they definitely would partner. Hazel Parker is another one.
And who is it? Now I'm monopolizing. And who is it that decides that the city is doing satisfactory job?
Hey, Tom.
There is oversight and on that space, but that does come directly from the Water Resource.
Question.
A lot of oversight in terms of all of that. So those are great questions that he would be able to answer too. Have you invited Jim Nash? He'd be a
Yes, we did.
Yeah, he's a great, a great.
We recorded that meeting. It's on our YouTube.
Okay, I have to go and give it a thumbs up.
That's okay. Um, we do have a question from Zoom. Hi, Sherman.
I can hear you.
Hi. So I had emailed you earlier in the week, and I haven't heard back yet. Um, the mayor in her April address to the constituents, uh, included in her email, a pilot project that the county's gonna be doing regarding water barrels for Oak Park residents who have flooded, um, backyards. And I wanted to find out more about that. If you don't know anything to share today, I would appreciate if you would read my email.
Yeah, when I saw mayor, I said, who, who's this Sherman guy? Um, uh, but no, I'm not familiar with that at all, any rain barrel initiatives. Um, are you saying they're from the county or coming from Oak Park specific?
No, it's, it's a pilot project that's gonna be initiated by the county and Oak Park and maybe other cities. It was in, it was a blurb that was in her, uh, monthly email address for April. And so my backyard, when it rains, gets wa, standing water. And so I wanna know more about this pilot project, who's, uh, who's eligible for and all, you know, those details.
Yes, I see it here. Um, so I don't have the answer for you on this, but you know, again, one of the things I wanna make sure to mention, Kenneth, and I'm glad you put me on here, um, is the importance of including the executive side, cause they do a lot of stuff, and we're, we're pretty much the purse. Um, so you'll see things that the health department has put out, or the Water Resource Commissioner has put out. And sometimes we are a little last to know at the, at the board level. So I'm not familiar with a rain barrel program. However, I would be one of the first to sign up as well, because, um, I think they're fascinating, but I mean, they have to be managed well, otherwise you have like mosquito nests, I hear. So, um, but yeah, I got you here, and I do want to make sure to follow up with you. So I'll get you some information uh, by noon tomorrow, if that's okay.
Ever. I just figured since you were on and I was attending, I would put the buzz in your ear.
Yeah. I love it. I can't wait to figure out. Yeah, I love it. I can't wait to figure out what department that's under. Um, it might've gone through, uh, health and public safety and not, and not economic development. So, thank you for that. And, and you know, um, so this may not be helpful. Sorry, I know. The two identified communities in, in Oakland County that have been getting a lot of support has been Royal Township and Pontiac for obvious, you know, GDP reasons. I would say that their goal is to have. You know, some, we have people, seniors even, who is one person in the house and they're like, why is my water bill ninety dollars? And so for those instances, and again, I think you would call your Department of Public Works specifically. You know, as a homeowner too, and I lived in the house where my grandparents bought back in the late, early seventies. Um, so I saw my grandfather tinkering with stuff long years ago. I will say that it seems. The catch twenty-two, when you do call them to say like, check my meter and, you know, they're like, oh, well install a new meter. And you're like, great, until you get that bill. And you're like, should have kept my old meter. So some of those old meters, I mean, I, I'm. Probably not supposed to say, I would keep. Because the newer technology is going to be a lot crisper. So that may not be your case. The point is to make sure to reach out to your DPW because there could be. Uh, what the, they will do is investigate for leaks between the house and. Oh, you mean storm, storm.
Permeable versus non-permeable.
Yes. And you're being charged?
Out of my eighty bucks, thirty-two for one.
Depends on how much permeable they did over. Over the house. Survey.
Kind of, what do they say? Uh, today I learned. Today I learned, um, I'd love to find, you know, if you have a screenshot of that, that statement, if you're willing, you know, you could black out your, your, your personal information. But I would like to just know, like. That line item, it would be helpful. So that way at least I know who to go to. Because, um, one of the things I'm really pride myself on is, A, I don't have all the answers because, you know, we have staff and I'm. Oh, you know, lowly county commissioner, you know, your state reps and your senators, they have staff, like they've got. Dedicated teams of people to go out there and do stuff. Uh, your mayors and you know, your city council folks is usually just us, you know, investigating these things. But one thing I do is I'm like a dog with a bone. If I hear something that just seems like I need more information, I love getting, getting more insight on that. So. I would like that. If you want to share with me, Crystal, that'd be great. It's Charles, like, you know. No, then the, my last name is Smith Charles. Um, so you can send it to Charles and at the end of the word Charles, so just like the normal selling C H A R L E S, it's not person initial Y. So I always tell people it's Charlie, charlie@oakgov.com. I also have a county phone, so that's why I say use it. You pay for it, you should use it. It's two four eight. Eight oh seven, four three six three. There's some newsletters. Do you usually send out like an after meeting blurb of any sort?
We have a after meeting, uh, meeting. But, uh, because it's recorded, we just rely on that information on YouTube site.
Okay.
And, yeah.
Just a couple of things I wanted to mention, but you know, if there's more questions, I definitely wanted to tackle those. We're looking good on time. It's forty-five after. I had no, I, I didn't think I would. Be up here at that length of time, but I'm glad because it's important stuff. So. Website is oakgov.com, just as a reminder, you know, bookmark it. And then I'm sure you, you know, at, at voting time, you're probably checking out the clerk's. Site. Um, in the month of July, I spend most of my time at the county because I'm on the finance committee. And we're tasked with hearing from every department at the county. You talked about our budget. Uh, we'll be doing some budget narratives over the next few weeks. Um, our economic outlook luncheon is on Monday where, you know, it's one of those kind of things where they're like, the state of the county is strong. Uh, but we want to see the numbers. So that's Monday where we'll be able to look and see, you know, what's our fund balance look like? What are the expectations? I'll go this way. So it's a, a positive. What are the expectations for our, our, you know, our property values for, for just everything that matters to you, the homeowner? Um, at the end of the day. Uh, and, and so in July, we go through every one of those lines, the clerk comes. Uh, Karen McDonald, the prosecutor, she's probably one of the, the people I see the least. I will be honest, we see the treasurer a lot. Uh, we see the clerk, Lisa Brown, all the time because she does our meetings. Um, and we see Sheriff Bouchard quite often, or, or at least his undersheriff who comes by and, uh. One of the largest parts of our budget, quite frankly. And because I'm a Democratic elected politician, I can say that. The Democrats support, uh, police. Like, if, if, so if you hear it out there in the street, it's not true because every vote I've taken, uh, for the police has pretty much been a yes. Because I, I don't want to stand in the way of them being able to save lives. And so, um, now Oak Park is not one of the sheriff's. Territories, but you know, your police department, for example, um. Smaller, these smaller and smaller communities are just trying to figure out like, how do we afford our own police? How do we afford our own fire? Um, and again, we just want to make sure that we partner with our, our law enforcement partners. So Karen McDonald and. Sheriff Bouchard are by and large, our largest chunk of the, of the pie of our budget. You know, whether you like it or not, Charlie, he was the opposite of me, like, no, 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 I'm vote no on everything. You want a helicopter? No. Me, I'm like helicopter, yes, let's get like two. Um, so, two Democrats, but different, right? Um, so their budget, Karen's budget, the treasurer's budget, Dave Coulter's budget. All of that has to be approved by us. Uh, we are the purse. So if people are like, what does the Board of Commissioners do? We are like the legislature, you know, when it comes to policy, um, and just making sure that things run. So. I think it's a pretty cool gig. Um, it's, it's really under the radar most of the time. Um, I started on the school board for, for like almost ten years. I served on the school board. Not a check came my way. I never got paid. It was all, you know, all volunteer. And it was literally the best elected office experience ever. When I go to the county, you know, we had. Hours of public comment over the last couple of years about masks, about shots, about. Everything under the sun. And I was like, none of this was as hard. None of those conversations, masks, shots, none of that. Was as hard as voting to close my old high school. Like, I'll take shots, masks, conversations all day, but closing your, your beloved old high school. That was, that was the hardest vote ever. It's like the train. I'm, I'm glad I'm not having to vote on the train. So, and it's election year for these, some of these people. So they're really going to be, you should go up to all of the people running and ask them their, their thoughts on the train. And get them on like, get them recorded with it. Um, but yeah, so I'm, I'm here. You know, uh, I gave the phone number, the email, and again, all of our meetings are public. I hate to say it, but until I got there, I was like, why aren't these meetings streamed? Who feels like driving to Pontiac? At nine thirty on a Wednesday. It's just silly. Uh, but so they're all streamed on YouTube, just like yours, where you can find it and, uh, just stay in the loop. Um, and stay in touch with us. So with that, again, I'm happy to a- answer more questions or we can. Uh, get back to other fun O P H, or see the O, E O P A business. And, um, I think, is it Lester? Lester, I think, you know, while he was a bit long-winded, had something valid in there of simply who's paying for it. And so think about your community's per capita income, you know, just look at the numbers and ask yourself. How are they going to pay for all of that wonderfulness? And, um. I think, I think, I, I don't know what's, what conclusion you will come to, but I just want you to have all of this, all the specifics because. Um, you're probably not able to hear from the park, Oakland County Parks. Uh, so, but that is a part of it. That is the vision. And it sounds amazing. I love it. I'm here for it. I just don't, you know, I don't know where, uh, the resources come from, if it's not from the county. Or the taxpayers, which is still the taxpayers. So.
No private fund they deserve. Someone in the background just throwing money.
No, uh, Dave Coulter gave the Parks Commission, Parks and Rec Director fifteen million dollars. To invest in Southern Oakland County parks. So, um, you know, Pontiac just grabbed their portion. Hazel Park was like, whatever you can do. We are, we want it. Super, you know, come, come to Jesus, like, we want it. Um, South Illinois Park are my divas. They're like, uh, we need, we need all the bells and whistles or we're not doing anything. So. And I can say that because I love both of those communities.
Let's ask Zoom too, if they have any questions. You want to ask them?
Yeah, we're, we're listening if you have anything on Zoom. And. Well, we're not in, in the sense of like, hey, here's some cameras, but we do have, uh, buying power. So like with our schools. And as I was telling Crystal, I was like, this is the first time I ever was kind of nervous coming into school. Because of like, we're in a school. And that's sad. Um, but you know, like reinforcing the windows and the doors and things like that. Instead of a school district trying to have to pay for that out of their own pocket. You know, we would collaborate. For the cameras. For the synagogue. Um, I would definitely say it's worth, it's worth a conversation. Um, whether we would be able to, it may be like, um, loan or grant, you know, it's one of those things because. You'll have some people in the community that don't feel like the taxpayer dollars should go to that, or there should be some kind of match. So then, uh, you know, it's always some level of bureaucracy a little bit with that. But again, when it comes to cities saying, hey, we want to reinforce this or. A city saying, we want to help reinforce our churches and our synagogues. You know, maybe we could write to the, to the county, you exactly can, like to your individual commissioner. So me, and I would basically submit that as a, as a quest. And I, I was told yesterday, the sooner the better. Because, you know, if you get to September, October, other commissioners probably have already asked for stuff. So, um, you could kind of think of it as a wish list. And, you know, never, anytime of year, like submit your wish list. And there may be times where I'll be able to make things happen. Um, so the roads, I notice no one talked about that, interestingly, but just to make sure you know, the, um. Uh, road commission is under talks right now as to whether or not we want to do like with parks, which is make it. Like bring it back underneath the county, uh, as opposed to its own entity, because most people ask me about roads when I have. No, no actual control over the roads. Quite fascinating. Um, but yeah, road commission is definitely something I think you all will want to continue to pay attention to. Their meetings are public as well. All of this is public money. So I just want you all to, uh, you know, maybe designate someone to go to those because transit is. On the, you know, we're talking a lot about how to roll out this transit thing. Uh, there's some virtual town, not town halls, but. Basically informational's coming up over the next couple of weeks for all of the communities. To just hear like where we are right now with the transit conversation in terms of actually rolling it out. So. Lots and lots to, to always consider. Um, just real quick, if I have any veterans. I always like to make sure to share the resource fair for those folks, which, uh, the closest one will be in our neck of the woods. In Farmington Hills at the Caustic Center. Um, many of you may be familiar with, uh, Caustic Activity Center on eleven mile. And that's going to be May twenty-fifth, and it's simply a resource fair for all of our veterans, whether it's regarding health or, um, employment. Food boxes will be available. And again, it's for all veterans, including active duty, um, guard and reserves and their families. Right. And then, um, there's free entry for Oakland County Parks over the next couple of weeks. So you can take advantage of that. Um, free entry at. Parks, including our dog parks. So if you're out over the next couple of days, I hope, I think the weather's improving. Um, so May sixth, May seventh and June nineteenth, and you can get a full list of those parks, um, on the, on the county website too. And I think that, oh, I'm not sure if this, this is a young room in here. So I, you know, Medicaid might not be something you're, um, participating in. But the, there are resources available to those of you who need help with medic, um, excuse me, Medicaid renewal. And, um, so all you need to do is just, uh, there's a beneficiaries hotline. With the Michigan Department of Health and Human, Human Services. And so I just want to make sure you all were, but. Uh, aware of that because apparently those enrolled in Medicaid will have to update their address, phone number and email. In the Michigan My Bridges account ASAP. So if you have any loved ones that might be applicable to, um, they can reach out to. Is this, is it okay if I say the number? Eight, one eight hundred, six four two, three one nine five, eight hundred six four two, three one nine five. Um, or you can go to Michigan.gov four slash My Bridges. So those are the, the three things I thought were most pertinent for today. And, uh, again, you've got my number, my email, and, uh, I know where to find you on the first Thursdays of the month. And, um, I'll be signing up for volunteering for the forum this summer.
Uh, well, I've got a signup sheet there for anyone who wants to work on it. And we've got one more job for you, Commissioner.
Okay. It'll be an honor.
While we're paying off Lester. Is there anything else anybody wants to bring up?
I just wanted to, um, let everybody know, um, I know that Lindsay has been working on the park. Like she cleans up.
Congratulations.
And that's part. So, um, I was wondering if anyone would want to help her or have someone. Do it like a couple of times during the summer. If we could get a couple of people to help her out because she's. Probably, she doesn't want to do it anymore. And also if I could get people to call in to the city about the sign that's falling down in Best Park. That would really help. I called them this week. I know Lindsay called them. If you could call them again or send your email, send that out to them. As many people as we can to get that sign fixed.
Call the mayor. And I would think that would go to the Public Works Department.
Right. It's Dave DeCosta.
Dave DeCosta, the Public Works Department. And if you can help out Lindsay at Best Park, put it on that sign sheet.
Fun to get people to assign up and do that, even if we did it at a time where. Maybe we clean, we, we had a cleanup. That would be part of the cleanup crew. Okay. I thought she, I thought she did it the other day. Cause she had that, there were bags out there the other day. They were like.
On the boulevard.
Not on the boulevard.
Anything else?
There is a trophian from many storms. It's just old phone lines that are just through. Um, almost could have gone out. It had been for a year, years, years, years.
I have one like that in my backyard. I have one like that in my backyard.
See, cause I think the ticket is to identify who owns the line. Because they're all gonna point the finger at somebody else. Could be Comcast, it could be the AT&T, it could be someone else. So maybe Public Works can identify. Be a good question posed to them. When I have the problem, I know whether it's an AT&T line or it's a Comcast line. And so I can tell them and they come and they'll take it off of my garage. But I know whose line it is. So I think that's the first step. Anything else anybody wants to bring up? Yes, sir.
The twenty-second of July. And I'm Crystal Bailey, running for city council. Um, I'm just, uh, like, we don't have a primary election. So we're, November seventh is the election day. So I'm really excited to um, hit the ground running, campaigning, letting you guys know first.
Crystal, just to let you know, we don't use this forum for politics. For personal, uh, some people who are running for office. We're glad that you joined us. We're glad that you're with us. We want you with us, but we don't use it as a forum to run for office. We felt, we decided that that would be an inappropriate use and we would have to acknowledge everyone who's running for office. And consequently, we don't do it for any. Anything else? Yes, sir. Thank you. We'll see you next month, right here.
I'm sorry, it didn't sound so good, but that's the best we could do today. And I'm just gonna go stop recording.